Right. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order at six oh two P M. Uh, the first item of business is to approve the minutes of July tenth. I had a couple things Cindy for you.
Um, yeah, on the minute you said Wednesday, July twelfth, I think it's was Wednesday, July tenth, pretty sure. Yes, it was.
Okay, so we need to change that.
Oh, okay, hang on, we got George and Bob.
Okay, good, full house.
All right, so I need to change.
We're in the third line.
Seven ten.
Yep, and then uh, in the uh, item number one to review and vote to approve the minutes of June twelfth. It's a little confusing where I mentioned that Ginger was asked about doing hybrid meetings result, I wanted to add. Resulting in a few extra minutes of discussion, that's why, so it explains why we had two different um. Votes to adjourn.
Um, excuse me, um, Bob, I'm, I'm just looking at my calendar, we met on July tenth.
Right, not July, right.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I thought, I thought there was eleven being said, okay.
No. Did you get that Cindy, my, my correction there?
Yes, June, uh, changed to July tenth and then. Then from um, resulting in a few extra minutes of discussion after Ginger asked, inquired about hybrid.
Great, does anybody else have corrections, additions?
You be careful.
No.
If not, then I'll accept the motion to accept the minutes of the tenth of July as correction.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, here we go, um, Fred.
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And Ginger?
Yes.
Okay, and we move on. Financial report, Bob, I don't know, you probably haven't had a chance. I get that.
I reached out to Jim, um, and he and I were gonna get together. Um, he asked that I wait for him to get back to me and I never heard from him.
Okay.
And I got busy in the last couple of days and haven't had a chance to reach out to him.
My wife spoke with Katie today and um, Jim is doing better, much better.
Good.
Want you to know that.
Good.
So we'll, we'll, we'll hold on that. Um. Cindy, you just keep an eye peeled on that, uh, on our finances. And if you.
So far, so good.
Okay, great, director's report, that would be you.
Thank you, Mister Chair, so a few thing or two things came up after I sent out my director's report, um. Did everyone notice that we ended fiscal year twenty-four on a zero ballots?
Yes.
Which is, is good. Um, so you had asked me to um, report, there's seven hundred and fifty dollars left in our ARPA. Chimney slash window painting repair files.
Okay, so um. Did we, we didn't apply that to anything else?
That is what's left after all the invoices have been submitted for what Rich Cooper has done. Um, for the chimney and the original painting of the rotunda windows. So that's what's still remaining in those files.
And. Could we use those, that seven hundred and fifty dollars to offset? The other amount that we were gonna take out of state aid to pay, um.
For window painting?
No, for, for um. The brick ceiling.
I don't see why we can't.
Cause it is brick repair.
Yes. Well, didn't we, uh, didn't the town approve funds from? At town meeting for brick repair work?
No, the, I guess they approved funds for the ceiling and not.
Not the actual repair.
Right.
Okay.
So in, in, in our last meeting, didn't we vote to take?
To pay out of state aid.
Yeah, thirty-three seventy-five for repairing and replacing the bricks, um. Do you want to amend that number and use the seven fifty?
Okay, when I get back, I will.
I wondered if the, what the trustees think.
Are we trying to run the money down? Are we trying to use all the money?
Yeah.
It's, it's use it, it's use it or lose it, right?
Ah, then use it.
Yeah, yeah.
You lose it if you don't use it.
So Cindy, is there an easy way for you to work with Dara to pay? Uh, the thirty-three seventy, thirty-three seventy-five minus seven fifty, do it with two, from two lines?
I just have to submit two different bill schedules and indicate where the funds are coming from.
Okay, is there anything else about? Is there anything else about window painting or brick repair that we need to hold that money for?
Weren't you going to have Bob Holler come and paint the trim?
Uh, we got, we got report on that coming later.
Yeah, there's.
Okay.
But again, it's. Yeah, it's use it or lose it, so if it, if we use it on that, I think, I think we're gonna spend that much money on painting the trim. Um. Personally, if the money's sitting there in our account and we have. A way to utilize that, those funds that align with what the funds were intended for.
Right.
I, my sense is we take them. Um, again, we go back to what if, what if there was some type of event in town and everybody's budget got crunched? We could push the painting back another year.
Okay. So Cindy, you gonna try to work that out, submit to two and see what Dara says?
Yes.
Okay, works for me, everybody good on that? Should we take a, should we take a vote to, to amend our? Original plan to use the thirty-three seventy-five out of state aid?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, could someone make an appropriate motion to that effect? Move to use the seven hundred and fifty to offset the cost of the thirty-three seventy-five?
I, I move that we use the seven hundred and fifty dollars that's remaining for. Um, what was it, the brick ceiling?
ARPA funds, electrical.
ARPA funds, um, then we. I move that we use the seven hundred and fifty dollars remaining in the ARPA funds. For the brick repairs that were done prior to the brick ceiling.
Okay.
Second.
Is there, yes, Ginger.
I will second.
Oh, second, okay, uh, it's been moved in second, is there any discussion? If not, we'll go to a roll call vote, Ginger?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, right. Cindy, you were, you were in the middle of your report.
Oh, yes, um, and then Amy La Valley is interested in becoming a substitute. Library associate and I just need the board to say yes, it's okay that she comes on board and gets trained to be a substitute.
When does she have time?
I don't know.
She's a town clerk, right?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, that's, I, I mean, I think that's great, um. Uh, do you need a motion to that effect?
Probably.
Okay, um, someone move to, um, how do you want it said Cindy to?
Appoint Amy La Valley as a substitute library associate.
Effective immediately.
Yes.
Is there a second? First of all, some, a trustee's actually gotta make that motion, just say so moved, some, so moved?
So moved.
Okay, now, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved this second into appoint Amy as a, a substitute librarian, is there any discussion?
Yeah, wh- wh- why do we need to do that?
That's how it works.
Huh?
That's how it's supposed to go, I. I say this is the person I want to hire, but then the board has to vote to say yes, this is, we're okay with that. And then let the town know that it's okay that this person was hired or appointed.
And can be paid.
And can be paid.
Yes.
Cindy, uh, maybe, uh, but the question is, is there a need for that? And if so, what does it commit us to, if anything, or is it?
Well, so whatever it is, Amy would be a substitute, so say like. This week when I was on vacation, if Carol or Kim weren't able to fill in any of the hours, if Amy was available, she would go in and fill in the hours or say. Next month, Kim is going away on vacation, if Carol wasn't able to, and I weren't able to cover all of the hours for Kim shifts, then. Amy as a substitute would just come in and fill in as we need her, where we would need her to cover a shift. So it's not that I'm bringing in a third person and having the job be three people, it's. Amy's just gonna be used when we need her, where we need her.
Okay.
So there are no actual extra hours, it is just.
No.
Fill in, so there's not a hole or you're looking for someone and we are out, someone to be at the library?
Yes.
And I, I, I really just, uh, none of you was on the board when uh, COVID struck and we ended up with a librarian with COVID. An associate with COVID and liter- literally, we were trying to figure out how to do everything that had to be done. So if there are three subs. Um, and I mean, you only hire, use one at a time, I think that's a, a good thing. And in answer to your question Fred, Cindy is their immediate supervisor and we are hers. Therefore, when she recommends to us the hiring of an individual, we have to approve it. Just as we would if we were hiring a, a library associate or another librarian or another custodian, we would have to approve it. That's part of our, our gig, okay?
Well, it sounds like a good idea, like having an extra player on the bench, if you need him.
Yes.
I think so, okay, is there any other discussion or questions or? Okay, if not, we'll proceed to a vote, George?
Yes.
Ginger?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Okay Cindy, keep on rolling.
Okay, that's all I have, Mister Chair, thank you very much.
July circulation numbers sure look good.
Don't they?
Yeah, I mean, uh, have we broken a thousand?
Not since that September, a couple of years ago.
Okay, so we're getting close.
We're getting close though.
That's nice, does anybody have any questions on Cindy's report?
Uh, kind of, uh, not so much this report, but I guess maybe going back a little to the minutes of last meeting, Cindy was supposed to send. The rest of the trustees a copy of the survey results, I never saw that, did anybody else see that? Everybody else saw that?
I'll resend it.
I think Deborah said she didn't see it, I don't know, George said he didn't see it either.
No, I don't have it.
I don't, I, I forgot all about that.
I will resend them again after this meeting.
Okay, now, can I just ask you, speaking of resending, did you all get? Last month's minutes from Cindy earlier this week, or did you get them today from me when I forwarded?
Today from you.
Today.
But what the hell happened?
Cindy, there, there is an issue that you need to figure out, uh, um, with why when you send stuff. On CW Mars, it doesn't come to us, because I, that's the second month in a row. That we didn't get minutes, I, so you gotta, you gotta look into that and figure it out, okay?
Yeah, I, I'm so sorry about that, I have no idea. If it's because I was doing them from home and sending them from my laptop, but that shouldn't make a difference.
No, not if you were in that account.
No, well, I, I'm, I am so sorry, I have no idea what's going on.
Okay, just check it out.
It's in the matrix somewhere.
Okay. All right, old business, strategic plan update. Could hear from.
Well, George, Deborah and I sat down and reviewed the rough draft that I came up with, they offered some suggestions and edits. So before I left, I was sort of picking away at it. And then when I go back, I'm going to um, pick away at it some more. So that I have the cleaner rough draft that George and Deborah um, suggested I go with.
Okay, and, and um. Deborah sent, sent that link which you're probably well familiar with about what's supposed to be in it. And are we making a checklist and checking it twice, making sure that we're not naughty but nice?
Yes.
And covering it all, okay, so it's really important that we do that. Just so that it doesn't get kicked back to us and we ended up, you know, having to spend the holiday season fixing it, right?
Right.
Okay.
Cindy, do you have a, do you have a, a rough idea of when you would be getting Deborah and me a second draft?
Um, I'm hoping to get it to you by next Wednesday, my plan is to go in on Saturday and chip away at it some more.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and make sure you start with the other, the two members that are your helpers before you send it in the blast email. Let you, you three have the feedback together before, um, it comes to us. Okay? Does, is that accurate, Deborah?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right, um, Bob, brick repair and ceiling project update.
Uh, done.
Done, done, so did, they, they managed to separate the bills Cindy?
Yes, they did, and then I realized that because one of them is over the two thousand dollar limit, you need to sign it before I can submit it.
Oh, okay, um, hmm, tomorrow's Thursday, you're not there.
Saturday?
Yeah, um, my life is complicated by the fact that I'm working for Sanderson and that's all weather related and when we start is all up to Alan each and every day, so I never know. And Sunday, yeah, it's called farming.
Well, that's true, farmers, they don't get, get a day off.
There is no such thing as Sunday, um, okay, yeah, I will definitely try, I will definitely.
Oh, I can ca- I can call you when I get to the library to let you know I'm there.
Okay, and if I'm not sitting by tractor, I'll be able to do something.
And if all else fails, I can just drop it off in your mailbox.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll get it.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, all right, and update on duty room floor repair, we have.
Back to the, back to the ceiling, it's all soaked in. You, you don't even see it, I think, I think the tint has changed a little bit on the bricks, not much. But if you run your fingers across it, you can feel a. It's not waxy, but it's, you can feel it on the bricks, it's interesting. So, update on the duty floor, um, I emailed, I think I emailed that to you Bob, and I probably should have emailed that out to everybody, should I send it out to everybody real quick?
Yeah.
Okay, there is. Um, where did it go? Okay, uh, forward. All of a sudden, my computer's going super slow here. Um. We have an, we have an estimate, um. Back to do the work. Bob, maybe you can tell them, I'm having a hard time talking and chewing gum at the same time.
I'm, I'm trying to find the email, but I'm.
Is that the one where they're asked, where they gave the amount of that the library's supposed to cover?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have that real quick?
No. I don't think I ever got it.
Hang on.
Hold on, it's gonna be coming out.
Okay, this is the moisture prep.
Yeah.
Allied flooring, okay, so I have it, do you want me to forward it to everybody?
I think I just sent it, if, if my computer's cooperating. I'm watching myself on the TV and it's a little sluggish. Or at least.
I just, I just got it.
Okay, good, good, so if you look at that, you see, um. The amount, it is, let me get it back open again here.
Two thousand one hundred fifty-six sixty-two.
Right, that goes back to when I. To explain to everybody who, who hasn't been along for the ride on this, um. The way I prefaced everything when dealing with Allied was they, we considered them the experts when they installed the floor three or four years ago. And considering that we had a water event that caused us to lose the carpeting. Maybe they should have considered putting water. Penetrating something that would stop the water in there, if they would have. We would have paid for that as part of the previous floor install.
Right.
So what we asked them to do was tear the floor out. Put a new floor in with whatever treatment they should have done previously. We would pay for that treatment, but we expected them to pay for the removal and the installation of the new floor. Our part of that is the two thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars, minus the sales tax obviously, cause we don't pay sales tax, but. That's, that's our part of this new install, we will get a new floor, I asked Donna, I told her we were gonna vote on it tonight. Um, I asked her if we voted yes, could they have the new floor installed by the end of October? Which hopefully should give us enough time before the weekend after Thanksgiving for the holiday party. Uh, and she said, yes, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
So I, I think we should do it, I think it should have been done previously, um, we're gonna get a brand new floor. And. I, I don't, I don't know what else to do, if we put another floor down with the water that's now coming through there, we're just gonna have more problems, so we gotta do something.
Okay, um, can I have a motion for, um, uh? Uh, well, first of all, I guess, in order to discuss this, we should have, we should have it on the floor. Um, to accept the, the um, proposal from Ally for two thousand eighty-eight fifty-eight, that's the figure without the tax, okay? And then once we get that, we can determine where it's gonna come from. And we can discuss if you have, you know, issues with that, would someone like to make a motion to accept the bid for two thousand eighty-eight fifty-eight from Allied floor?
I make a motion that we accept the bid for two thousand eighty-eight fifty-eight from Allied floor.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, now we have discussion. Okay.
Bob, can you, sorry, can you explain what, um, what water event, uh, originally? Uh, ruined the, the rug and what water events in the future, you sound like you're expecting water events and is that accurate?
There was a, there was a, pardon the pun, a confluence of, uh, things which occurred, I think it was two summers ago. Number one, uh, our gutters on the roof of the rotunda were a little bit plugged, not a little bit plugged, plugged. Um, water ran down the side of the building, um, I guess you, it would be the southeast side of the rotunda. And it went. Through to the basement on the inside and ruined the carpet. Um, and we had to get that taken care of, we obviously had to get the carpet out of there right away, we, we, we hired somebody, right, to suck up the water. But then, of course, we have, you know, worries about mold and stuff, so we decided to move toward doing the floor. Perhaps it was three summers ago, I can't remember, but it was during that really, really rainy summer. And, uh, so, um. We now have Keith, uh, making inspections of our gutter system with his snorkel truck. Um, every year, so that we try to avoid the kind of buildup we had, the, there was so much organic. Decomposed organic matter in the downpipes that they just, it simply bubbled over and then just ran down the side of the building. Um, so, that's the history of why we went to the, to the floor and not carpet, and we thought we had it solved. Um. But the problem is that there, there seems to still be water that has somehow penetrated the, what's underneath there and we need to seal it out of there.
They, they think, Allied thinks it's coming up through the water table, they think it's coming up from below. And Mike, they, they asked, have new houses been built? And I said, oh, in that road? I don't think there's been a new house for.
A long time.
A few decades at least, longer than I've been in town, um. I don't know, I think it's raining more, um. This, if, if we, so we had the event that Bob's talking about, and then there must have been something else that happened. When did it bubble up? Before last fall, I think.
Before we did, and last, last summer was an incredibly rainy summer, if you remember, I mean, people's crops were destroyed. Inches and inches of rain, we had like nineteen inches of rain in five days at, at one point in July. So I think that, that the water table responded. And as it rises, water percolates to the surface and it came again, so that it, it, uh, on the, the click lock floor, it just. Where there were, um, seams budding, it just kind of raises them up. And you can glue them back down, but then they'll appear somewhere else and it'll be a continual process, so, um. It has to be removed, it has to be sealed, and, um, thankfully, uh, Allied's gonna replace the floor.
This allied believe that, um, that what they're going to do with this, this extra stuff will solve the problem or just, um. Uh, make it a little less problematic, I mean, we're gonna have a, if it's the water table, that's a, and, and we're gonna have rain issues all the time.
So, two things, two things about that, Allied will stand behind, if we. Spend this money, Allied will stand behind their product and warranty this new floor. And I don't know exactly what their warranty is on the product we picked. But we will have the factory and the insulation warranty from them. Uh, second point, I talked to J D Ross, uh, who's a contractor, Jim's son. And I said, is this really gonna work? And he's, his comment was, yes, that's what you need to do. Um, I'm a lit, I was a little concerned before I talked to him because you have the thickness of the concrete. And then we have the non-permeable coating going on our side of the thickness of the concrete, so there's water getting. Up to that coating, and his comment, J D's comment was, that's what you have to do. He's used a similar product in the past and it works. So his comment was, yeah, that sounds like a, that sounds like the price is about where it needs to be. And this is what you wanna do, this is what you need to do to solve the problem, not to say that twenty, thirty years from now, we won't have a problem. Nobody's gonna go out that far and guarantee it, but for the, the near and midterm, um.
Yeah.
Thank you.
George, I think when you're dealing with water, uh, it, it does what it wants to do.
Yeah.
And I, I guess maybe I'll just have to call some of my Dutch friends and get some ideas from them, cause they're really good with water.
They're big fingers, yeah.
So, is, is there, are they gonna apply a, a glue to, before they put the tile back on? Or is the glue on the back of the tile already and they're just gonna put it on the surface?
They're gonna trow down, what are they, what is it? They have.
They're gonna seal it.
A skim coat and a vapor barrier primer that they are going, they're gonna mix up and they're gonna apply that to our floor.
To the concrete.
But then when you put the new flooring on, how is the new flooring gonna adhere to that? Are they putting glue on it?
They are. I don't know how they're attaching the floor, I didn't ask that, I didn't ask whether it's a floating floor or whether they're gluing it.
It's quick locking, isn't it? Isn't it quick lock floor?
I don't know. But this is, this is where, Fred, this is where I go back to them and I said, you guys are. You guys told us you were the flooring experts.
Yeah.
You, you are the flooring experts, right, so? We need to count on, we need to count on you guys knowing what you're doing and warranting what you've done.
Yeah, but the, the flooring that's there now, did they put a, did they put a, a glue adhesive on? On the concrete and then put the flooring on top, or did the flooring come with an adhesive to the back of it and they just laid the flooring out? Said, okay, it's, it's glued down. Cause if we're doing the same thing, it's gonna come up again, won't it?
Not if water doesn't get through to the, if there is adhesive, not if, the, my assumption would be. If that's how they're going to do it, if that's what they recommend and they stand behind. If they feel that an adhesive is going to work. Because the water won't get through their barrier coat.
Correct.
Is, may I ask one question, if they are putting the barrier coat down to basically it's waterproofing. Then they put the wood on top. If for some reason, the barrier is broken and they are guaranteeing it, then they would have to replace the wood floor again, is that not right? Then they would have to replace the wood floor again. Is that not right? At least within a certain amount of time.
That's my understanding and I'm willing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Donna was not, Donna was not happy with me. She was not happy with this deal, but she's willing to stand behind their work and their product and.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Bob, for, for making the deal and, and sticking out for it.
I think this is the best, folks, I think this is the best deal we're gonna get from them.
I think it's great. They're eating a lot of labor.
And the factory's eating the materials.
Right, right. Yeah, I think it's the best, best we can do.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any further discussion, any other questions? If not, we'll proceed to a vote on, oh, uh, maybe we should um. Decide where we're gonna take it from. My vote is state aid. Cindy, we're good there, right?
Yes.
With like thirteen thousand. And we're spending some state aid for the um, brickwork, but we just ameliorated that with seven hundred and fifty other dollars tonight. And so we'll be probably around eight thousand after all is said and done.
Probably.
With a new floor, fixed bricks, sealed bricks, painted windows. I don't know, I think that's probably a pretty good deal. So my suggestion would be to take it out of state aid if, if you also agree.
Sounds right.
So we will take this out of, if we uh, vote for it, we will take it out of state aid, Cindy.
Okay, but you're not voting for it tonight, are you?
Yes.
Oh, you are?
Motion on the floor to accept the vote and pay for it. Um, well, we're not gonna, you don't have to pay for it until they actually do it and bill us.
Right.
Right, okay, we're not gonna, well, Waitlay won't pay ahead of time anyways. Okay, so we're gonna proceed to a vote, so we're going to take out of state aid two thousand eighty eight fifty eight. To pay for the um. Uh, quote from Allied Flooring. Okay. Uh, George?
Yes.
Ginger?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Uh, painting project, Bob?
Um. Okay, so painting, I talked with Bob Holla earlier this week. Um. Uh, again, to bring everybody up to speed on the painting project. Once the bricks were done and sealed, repaired and sealed, then my thinking was, um. Paint the exterior, anything white that needed it. And fix the, um. The downspouts in the gutters because they were leaking in the corners. Um. That has gotten complicated. There are sections where the downspout seem to be, and the gutter seem to be doing okay. And on the wings, on the. I guess the north and south wing, um. The backing looks good, and Bob's comment was, I don't think you need to paint it, and I don't think you need to touch the gutters. There is some work that needs to be done on the center part, on the pitch roof. Where the downspouts come through. The outside of the building. They're, they're sort of integrated into the architecture of the building. Um. As part of all this with the downspouts and Bob is gonna talk to, sorry, going back to the painting, Bob is gonna talk, he's busy. And doesn't have time. He's gonna talk to some friends of his who are painters. He can help them. Uh, he will get back in touch with me, but right now we do not have an estimate. We do not have anybody lined up. So I'm hoping to talk to him, probably the beginning of next week and see where he's gotten. And begin to get some numbers and circulate those to everybody. Right now, the gutters, they had to pull the downspouts. Away from the building to be able to spray. Everything is secured. It's not as clean as. Uh, insulation as it could be in spots. But nothing's going to fall off the building, nothing's gonna fall off in the wind, everything works. Um, the other part of this project is the downs, so I'll get updates on the painting. The other part is the downspouts and the gutters. I went down and talked to Keith Bardwell about. How much work is it when they have to come out and pull everything out of the gutters? Um, and would it be a help if we got gutter guard or gutter helmet? I forget what it is. Larry Ashman had strongly suggested that we look into that. Around the library. And that's when, um, the guy was in town and gave us an estimate for fifteen hundred dollars. I'm starting to have second thoughts about that. Fifteen hundred dollars is fifteen hundred dollars that if we don't have to spend, we don't have to spend. Keith's comment was, listen, I gotta go up to do the rotunda. And the pieces that go through the architectural features of the building anyway. There's nothing that's gonna protect those, and if you put the gutter guard, gutter helmet things on the other parts of it. Well, that's great, that's a little bit less I have to do, but I still have to get a truck and at least one or two guys up there. It's really not that big a deal. So I think we put. I, I think we put any kind of gutter guard on hold, um. I'm gonna go down the next time it rains and see how much the gutters are leaking. I remember being down there earlier this year before the brickwork was done, because I also wanna see how the bricks are shedding the rain. Um, some of the corners were really leaking and dripping on the building. So I, I'll get an idea and I'll be able to report back at next month's meeting. On hopefully the painting and what I recommendations on what needs to be done with the gutters.
You, you also had concerns about the fact that there's maple trees nearby and their helicopters. Uh, sometimes can get be, in the slots of the gutter guards and make even more of a problem. Than you had when you didn't have gutter guards on.
Correct. Correct. It's not as simple as just slapping something on top of the gutters and then because. And I don't have a lot of information. I have a very basic estimate from these gutter people. Um. Is it maintenance free? Some of them you have to, every couple of years, you have to take them off and clean them out.
Yeah, I, I, I can, I don't see how you can get away. Uh, without having to do that. So I mean, all we're doing is like maybe skipping a year for Keith cleaning those. I, I, I agree with you that maybe we could put that on the back burner, and if it becomes something that obviously we need to do. Um, we can look at it, because we're, we've tackled a lot of projects in the past. Sixteen, seventeen months, and we're, we're making really good progress on the building. We're doing our job as trustees. Um, so, and we, we now know that the roof can wait for, till we um, can apply in the new year for. Um, CPC funding, and we know that, um. Bob Holla doesn't think all of the trim needs to be painted. I, I, I suppose we're gonna need to do something with the. Um, columns, because those are chipping and so forth. And I, I guess the, you know, especially the front of the building, which has the most white on it. Um, wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to throw a coat of paint on that, but yeah, I think we can wait on those things.
That's what I was thinking, and I was thinking maybe even if, if it doesn't work out, I could get down there and, and grab the pressure washer. And J D's lift and, and get in there and, and see about just cleaning it up with a, a slight. You know, not a heavy duty pressure wash, but just go in there and clean up the front part of it and. See what that looks like.
Okay.
So.
And um, I put down update on roof repair, Bob, and I basically, um, let the cat out of the bag.
Yeah.
So if you wanted, you spoke with um, J D or roofing?
I spoke with J D and the roofer and they said, yeah, it's just, their intention was to let us know that it's, it's. Looking like it needs to be repaired. Um, if funding doesn't allow to repair it this year, then push it out till next year, but they wouldn't let it go past next. They wouldn't, their comment was, I think you'll be okay this winter. I don't know about next winter.
Okay, I will, I will, um, when the time comes, make the proper application to CPC. Um, and see what happens, because that is not routine maintenance, I don't think. Okay.
It's gotta be what, a twenty, twenty-five year roof?
It's gotta be. Yeah. Okay, is there any other old business that we have forgotten to go over? Okay, if not, we can look at, um. I, I put it on, new business prioritizing building repair projects. I think we just did that. Um, so far, um. Plans to meet the October strategic plan deadline, Cindy, are we on target? George, Deborah?
Oh.
Bob, yes.
There was one other thing, the holiday gathering.
Yeah, that was, I was gonna bring.
Oh, I skipped it, I skipped it, I'm sorry.
So, I, I went and talked to Chip at uh, the Waitley Inn. And we are all set for that Sunday. I don't have the date in front of me, but whatever Sunday it is after.
December first.
Thanksgiving. Um, we are all set, we can get to him. He, I put it on my calendar when he said, stop in and let me know what you want. Um. We will have the new floor. I will make sure we have the new floor in by then. Um. And then it's, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to supply the coffee and the hot chocolate and all the other. Stuff. We still have, we have a ton of stuff left over at the house here from other events that we've done, so.
Would you like to cater something at my house, Bob? Sorry.
But. I think, I think we have time. Um, I think we have lots of time as we get closer. Um, as far as setup and, you know, what we wanna do and all that stuff.
Okay. Very good. All right, so now we're going back to, um. Did we get an answer there on plans to meet the October strategic plan deadline?
I, I noticed that the la, the, the last strategic budget I think was approved by the trustees. Uh, on September eighteenth, so is that something we should be aiming for? Uh, is that a, is that a?
Not.
When do we need to get it to the rest of the trustees, Bob?
Um, well, Cindy, when do we need to submit the report?
Well, Candace's went from July first to June thirtieth. Um, and so even though it was July first. It wasn't officially approved and accepted by the board until September.
Right, but when do we need to submit it?
Right.
Um, I will double check with Oscar. To get an actual date.
Yeah, our, our next meeting, it should be on the eleventh of September. Um, but I, I don't think you'll have it done by then.
It should be sometime, I'm hoping it'll be done by sometime around then.
Oh, okay.
I don't see why we shouldn't be able to do it, but uh.
Okay. So, so I, I will put it on the agenda. Um, if, if we can get that i- in a few days in advance so that everyone has a chance to read it. And that might be one of the sole items on the agenda for September, because I do remember that it occupied a lot of our time last time.
Deborah, how do you feel about that? And Cindy, how do you feel about that? Trying for that.
I think you could absolutely try. I think it's contingent on when Cindy is going to get that to us.
Yeah.
I would like to get a sense of when it's actually due to the state.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna double check with Oscar on that.
Okay, so we know what the hard deadline is?
Yes.
And I suppose if we had to have a special meeting where we just dealt with that, all we need is to make sure we have forty-eight hours notice and that we can get a quorum.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. So we could do that. If necessary, okay? Everybody good on that?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Now, there's um, another item of new business which will be listed under other, and that is that we have had. Uh, consistent trouble alarms from the fire alarm system uh, for, I don't know, pretty much all summer. And um, supposedly. Uh, Verizon came and fixed the problem, but it reared its ugly head in the past, I don't know, week and a half. I don't know, two or three times a day, starts about two thirty in the morning.
Yep.
You get calls from Chicago and it continues throughout the day. So Bob, did some, did, called our fire experts and this is what he found out.
Um, I, everybody should have gotten that from me.
Yes.
From fire equipment. Um, I talked with J P Kennedy, the fire chief. Uh, he said they are using it, that type of system. They had similar problems. At the fire department, and they're using that type of wireless slash cellular system at the fire department. They've had good luck with it. Um. What he asked, he asked that we do that. He asked that we use the same company that they use. Um, the same equipment that they use, so we can start to get some continuity between buildings. And then he even suggested that there'd be continuity between call lists. And I said, well, I don't think I need to get called if the fire alarm goes off at the town office. And he said, no, no, no. He said, but I'd like to be on your call list and maybe Keith. Something like that, and I think that would be appropriate, so it's not just an internal thing. Um. I. There doesn't seem to be a lot of answers on how to solve this. Other people have run, have run into it. Um, I mentioned to J P that, you know, we're working on a budget like everybody else is in town. And he's, his comment was, I know you're still working on the pool stations. If you need to take money from the pool stations to do this, this is more important.
So. You know, I, I still can't quite figure out, because. Uh, twice I went up there after the phone calls and the readout said system normal. I just, I, I don't understand why we're getting a, a trouble, something, and it's always a phone related. But yet, when I went up there, it said system normal, so I'm thinking.
What's the Verizon, what's the Verizon system that we're on? The one that, it, it's what allows. It's what allows Cindy to dial an extension and get somebody in the town hall. It's not a.
No, no. I, I have to dial eight to get an outside line. I can't just pick up and like dial three to get Amy.
Oh, really?
I have to pick it up and dial as an outside call over to town offices, over to. The fire department, over the police department, over to Keith. Um, so it's not, we're not. Part of the same phone system. Like I have my own, we have our own Verizon bill that comes every month for the library. For three lines, our regular line, the line for the. Fire monitoring and the line inside of the lift that allows people to call out. In the event that they're stuck in the lift and it's an emergency.
Okay.
We will be able to get rid of one of those lines, the line that goes to the panel.
Okay.
Cause it'll be cellular.
But there is, you see, there is, there's the one-time charge and then there's the annual recurring charge.
Right, the four hundred eighty dollars. So once, once we get this up and running, we're committed to. Spending four hundred eighty dollars over three hundred sixty-five days, which to me, doesn't seem like a lot of money to protect the library. So.
So. Great, yeah.
Making a, a budget, um, add it to next year's for F Y twenty-six's budget.
Well, yeah, yeah, you, you should, uh, um, I guess it would be uh, fire control monitoring, right?
Well, we have fire mon, well, we have a line item now, fire monitoring is a thousand dollars.
But that's, that's, that fire mo, monitoring is for the, um. Isn't lifts? The lift?
No, that's different.
That's just, or. Okay, so that, that Verizon one thousand dollars is what we're paying for that line that we're no longer gonna use after.
No, 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 the Verizon line. We have a line item for Verizon where the bill comes out of the line for Verizon.
Okay, so, so. Do we not use that fire monitoring thousand dollars?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And it goes to who? These guys?
Every year we get an invoice that is sent to, for some reason it's sent to the town and then Jessica forwards it to me. To cover the cost of having the system for a year. Like the annual fee for having it.
Is that the annual fee for it being monitored twenty-four seven?
Uh, that's probably what it is, okay.
Yes.
And that's a thousand dollars a year?
That's what's budgeted, that's what it's budgeted for, because that's what it was recommend when. We were first getting it all put in, that's when Brian was town administrator, that's what he recommended that. I put in as a budget for, just to make sure we had enough.
So ultimately, the answer to your question is, yeah, you'll have to put in another line item, um, for cellular fire monitoring. Um, connect fee. Okay, so, so what's in front of us is seven hundred dollars. Okay, so, so what's in front of us is seven hundred dollars to, um. Connect the, um, our system to cellular and, uh, annual, uh, connect contract fee of four hundred eighty dollars. So it's eleven hundred eighty total. Um. We really should act on this. What's your pleasure? Hello? Yes.
I wish there was another way around it. But I'm not sure what we do, Verizon seems to be unresponsive. Cindy, you would know more or unable to fix whatever their problem is.
He, the one time the Verizon technician came out, he, I guess he thought he had it fixed.
Well, it worked, it worked for a while without, um, trouble alarm.
Could it be that the lines get saturated from all the rain? Because they're underground?
I don't know, I, I hope not.
It shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be. Well, what do you think?
But they had similar problems at the fire department. It were, and I think it was either the town, the, I don't know if it's the new town building or the old town hall. But we're gonna be at least the second, if not the third town building to go on this type of system.
I think clearly with JP's recommendation.
Right.
And, um, we do have money set aside for those pool stations, we could swap it out. How much did we set aside for the pool stations? Does anybody remember?
No, that was, that was left in electrical. We were using what was left in electrical upgrades, the ARPA funds, electrical upgrades. I think there's about one thousand two hundred and forty dollars left in that. In those fund.
One thousand two hundred and forty dollars in those funds, that eleven hundred eighty fits right in there.
I'm pulling up the estimate from well design right now.
I thought that the balance in the electrical for. Uh, budget was like nine ninety-five or something, it wasn't more than a thousand dollars. Cause there was another item in there that we paid two hundred and seventy-fourty dollars for. For the back door, uh, the exit sign and, and above, and, and electric work, so.
No, that came out of the fire door replacement.
No, that shouldn't have. I, I saw the bill, it came from the electrical project. There's nine hundred ninety-five dollars and some change left. That was left in the electrical budget.
Okay, we're gonna, Cindy, we'll have to get to the bottom of, of what went where and.
I'll, I'll have to wait till I'm back in the library and I can pull up last year's bill schedules.
Yes, of course, of course. Okay, what do you want to do about this bill? Or this proposal, we really, we really should act on it.
I think we, I move that we, and maybe this is too soon to say these words, but I think we should do. I think we should move on it. Instead of the pool stations. And if we had money set aside for the pool stations. Um, that estimate was one thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars.
Alright. And we, didn't we vote to take that from somewhere?
Yeah, a thousand was from electrical budget and the other eight hundred was. Uh, I don't remember what it was from, maintenance maybe or something.
Okay. Alright, so, um. Is that language, uh, good enough for you that Bob's proposing? To just at, for the time being, until we get this financial thing figured out as to what went where. We're just going to take the money that we originally had earmarked for the pool stations. And use part of it. Um, a thousand. Eleven hundred eighty dollars to do this. Um, immediate repair to the control system. Are we good on that?
Good, yes.
Yes.
Is there, is there a second to Bob's motion?
Yes, side second.
Is there any discussion?
Does this, um, obviate the need for that a thousand dollar Verizon thing for, that Cindy referenced? Um, does that then? What happens to that?
I'm gonna look into that, because even if, I don't think it's a Verizon. And, and I think we need clarification on what exactly that is, because even if it. I pay fifty-seven bucks a quarter, fifty-eight bucks a quarter for my home monitoring. So a thousand a year, I, I'm happy to look into that and try to understand what Brian was thinking. And work with Cindy and maybe make that part of the work that I'm doing with Jim, and that might help get him. Moving with me. Um, to try to understand what. What that was. What the intention of that was, what it really is, um. Something's, something's weird, something doesn't sound right.
Seems like we're paying for monitoring twice.
Yes.
We'll have to figure that out.
Bob, would it, would it help finding out more of, of what we pay at the town hall, the town hall building, what the expenses are?
I'll do that. Either through JP or through the folks at the town hall. Um, somebody, because if it's whoever else, I'll, I'll go back and talk to JP and find out. Who else, now that we're coming on board, because I'm gonna have to interface with him anyway, to get all the call. The call lists updated, or at least our call list. Um, because apparently there was, there, I was talking to Keith and apparently the phones, his phone blew up over the weekend. Because of something down at the town offices on Sandy Lane, so I. But I'm gonna have to deal with everybody anyway, as this gets installed, I'm happy to do that, and as I'm doing that, I'll dig deeper into.
Right.
What is all this?
Okay, so is it? Is it? Wise for us to move forward with this, I, I'm, I'm, yes, I think so.
I think it is, because then moving forward with this unlocks a lot of the conversations that I. That will help figure out where this other money is, I, I. I'm, I'm happy to make the, the investigation of the thousand dollars, uh, another. Line item.
Okay.
In next month's meeting.
Alright. Okay, folks, so it's been moved and seconded, um, and if there's no further discussion, we're voting to replace. Spending that money that we had earmarked for pool stations to do the cellular upgrade of our, um, monitoring system. Alright, those, um, George, we're gonna do a roll call again.
Okay, yes.
Ginger.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Deborah.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
And I vote yes. You guys didn't know that we're gonna spend all of our time talking about all these. Crazy financial things about the building, but that, I mean, we are entrusted with the building.
And we're almost done. We're very close to, hopefully.
Yes. Okay, so folks, is there any other new business that has occurred since I published the agenda?
I have, I have two items I'd like to bring up.
Okay.
Uh. One is, I think it was at the last meeting Cindy mentioned. That somebody was, was in our, in the library, looking at the handicap ramps, accessibility and, uh. And, and whatever, and she's forwarded us, forwarded. Uh, the trustees a copy of their concerns. Uh. Looking at what their, what their concern was. And I was just there today, uh, I think the, the major concern was the. The ramp, uh, as you get up by the building itself, there's no hand railing at all. Either on the building or between them two white columns. If you're on that ramp between the two white columns and your wheelchair falls off the edge. You're going down the stairs all the way to the grass. There's nothing to hold on between the two white columns. I think that was her concern, as you get closer to the door. You've got the railing for the steps that comes out to, to hold on to if you need to. And you're close enough to the door to, to get in through the door. I, I think, you know, that's something we need to look at, it's, it's gonna be a liability issue if somebody's on that ramp and falls off. Cause they can't hold on to anything. You either put a railing between the two white columns. Similar to what you got on the steps from, what Blake Gory? Or you put one on a building for somebody to hold on to after falling off. Uh. I guess I would encourage the other trustees, when you're there, this, this. Uh, next month, to look at that and see what you think, if somebody goes off that edge. You're, you're gone, you're, you're down on the grass. I think it's a liability issue, it, it shouldn't cost that much to put the railing, a railing between the two columns. I don't know what we pay for the railing for the steps, but. Uh, I don't know, a thousand dollars maybe, I don't know. Uh, I think that's something we should look at. Okay, the, the other, other item. I guess concerns me some and. I was there today in the building and. There's, there's, uh, I don't know what the mini splits are set for, for cooling. The building down, I was in the basement, there's two thermometers on the bookcases. That they, they both said sixty-nine degrees and the humidity was fifty-seven percent. Uh. I saw Matt earlier, earlier today, and he was concerned that. The humidity in that room is, is so high. That it's, it's ruining the bindings on the, the books that are on the shelves. I looked at the, at the sheets, books on the shelves, the bindings have fallen off, they're deteriorating. I don't know if it's humidity related or it's just old age or whatever. Uh, there was a dehumidifier running on the floor. Uh. I, I don't know if it was full or empty, I didn't, I didn't bother touching it. There's also two different, I noticed two different dehumidifier units. Uh, portable ones, they're on wheels, in the back storage room. Uh. I guess my, my question is, is, is. Do we know what temperature it should be in the, in the building? And what should be humidity levels to protect our archives in that building? Uh. The people there, well, I always saw at the front desk, I don't remember her name exactly, she was with a sweater on because it was cold in the building. Sixty-nine degrees. I don't keep my own house at sixty-nine degrees. Uh, summer or winter even, uh. I, I, I think that's a concern, uh, if the mini splits don't work, which I've been bringing up. Uh, don't work efficiently, we need to look at replacing them. To get more efficient ones that take out the humidity, because they're not doing that if you need the units on a. Portable units on the floor. And, and I guess my concern is, or question maybe is, is to find out what should be the minimum temperature humidity level in a library? What do people set their, their heating and AC on? I guess call other libraries, find out what they have set on, not the sixty-nine degrees, I, I, I think that's, to me, that's too low. Now, unless somebody can explain to me that that's. That's what the state requires for libraries or everybody else is doing that temperature, fine, uh, I, I, I guess, but I guess. That concerns me that we're, we're not protecting our, our archives in the building.
Comments, anyone? Fred, I will put the, I will, I'll ask, uh, the trustees to, uh, in their own time between now and September eleventh to take a look at the ramp. Um, so that they can, you know, see it, visualize it, and then discuss. What we should do about it, at the, I'll put it on the September agenda. And then Cindy, when you get back to work, one more thing for you to do, call some libraries and find out. I know I asked you before and you, you called somebody on the state level about the temperature. In the library. And I can't remember. Um, do you remember, this was like maybe during the winter, I asked about that? Um, yes, so, um. Could you do a little bit of research to find out? Uh, optimal humidity level, obviously fifty-something percent is probably not optimal.
Right.
And I, I. So, maybe we should be running the dehumidifiers. Downstairs.
I think downstairs would be the biggest problem, would be downstairs.
Yeah.
And humidity, really bad humidity is bad for books anywhere.
Right. You know, there, there probably is a, there is a, a website that talks about. Environmental conditions in state and public buildings, because that's what I looked at when we were installing the, uh. The, uh. Water heaters in the bathrooms, and what was the minimum temperature there was, I think, like a hundred forty degrees is what they say you should have. Is the temperature, so there are, there are state, uh, regulations or guidelines or whatever you wanna call it. On public buildings, what there should be, the environment in the building.
Yeah, Bob.
Going back to. I don't wanna drag up the flooring again. But. Maybe once we seal the floor in the basement, not as much moisture will come through the concrete. I don't know. Uh, we're gonna, that would maybe a wait and see. I don't know that we do anything drastic this year, we're almost through the summer cooling season. Um. But if we seal that and all of a sudden find that the humidity drops, that may be part of the answer, Fred.
Well, it, it could, could be.
I think we still wanna know.
But the temperature.
Sorry, Ginger, I, I think we still wanna know what the recommended settings are, temperature and humidity.
Right.
Um, especially because some of the books in the basement are. One of a kind.
Right. And, and some of them that are in, in deteriorating condition, I don't know if there's some. Some, uh, company or group that, uh, cleans them, if they got mold on them, we can't, we see the mold. But cleaning the mold to preserve the buildings, is, is there some company that does that?
Again, uh, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go too far out in the weeds here.
Yeah.
We need to examine this, and the first step is to find out what the. Guidelines and regulations are and what other libraries are doing, that will help inform us. We're about to do something to the floor, so that might change things, we have a dehumidifier going down there now. Um.
Do we have extra dehumidifiers that are not being used?
I think, I think there are two in the janitor's closet in the, um.
So if it seems to be a lot, we could pull another one out and, and. You know. Have it work, which could help, you know, in the meantime.
Okay. Well. Bob, you around tomorrow, you wanna go down there tomorrow morning before I? Get on my tractor?
Sure, what time? I'll meet you down there.
Uh, eight o'clock?
You got it.
Alright, we'll check it out. Um, and then, um, I'll put that on the agenda, would everybody take a look at the ramp? Uh, and then, uh, Cindy, make sure that if. Uh. As soon as you find out, let me know what those temperatures are, if you could just send me an email that has a, a bunch of stuff on it. From other libraries and whatever.
Sure, most of the, the, most of the temperatures for. The circulation, uh, the rotunda area, the adult stacks room and the children's room, those are set at seventy-two. Matt requested that his, the mini split in the janitor's closet be turned. Down because it was cause he, uh, he was having an issue with it. The one in the community room was at, I believe about seventy-two, might have gotten turned up a bit. Um, I keep the one in my office at about sixty-five, just because I like to be cold. But it's hot.
Okay, so you, if you said that one of them was, was turned up a bit, by whom?
I turned it up.
Oh. Okay. Alright, well, um, Bob and I'll take a look tomorrow morning.
Bob, just text me, otherwise I'll see you there at eight, if he calls you early. I'm up by five, five fifteen most mornings, so.
Well, he's, he's, yeah, we, we're not gonna go out at eight o'clock, um, because there's always dew and fog to worry about, you can't harvest it wet, so. Okay. Um, Fred, that is what will our plan of attack will be between now and September eleventh, okay?
Okay, it sounds good.
Okay, uh, and September eleventh would be the next meeting, um, and. I am entering into my fall season and my cross-country meets are on Tuesdays, but if there's a thunderstorm. They would be moved to the next playable date, which could be the eleventh, in which case, have fun. You'll have the agenda and you can run with it. Yes, you can.
I, I just realized something, I am not here on September eleventh, so if the strategic plan is going to be under discussion, we're gonna need another night.
Okay, so we'll, 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 we'll see, because you've got, um, under a month there and. You three can decide on how close we're gonna be to launch, and Cindy's gonna have a, a drop dead date for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, just one, one other item, Bob, you, you sent us something that Peter sent on the. The town, what, employee handbook?
The personnel policy.
It's the personnel policy, and I really, I'm so sorry, I, I, I know it's eighty-four pages long.
Yes.
But Pe- Peter. Peter asked me, um, if we would just, uh, there are a couple of, uh, departments. That are, um, sort of have a different structure, and ours is one of them, because we have a board of trustees. Um, I think in the, for the sake of equity. Um, among all the employees of the town, that we should accept the. Policy that was accepted by the select board from the personnel subcommittee. Um, and I don't know if you read it, but it is really extensive and it goes into all kinds of, of, um. Uh, you know, behavior, uh, conduct, uh, reporting things, um. It's, I, I mean, it really is very, very detailed, and I didn't, nothing seemed to stand out to me as being. Oh, no, we can't do that, uh, and I think that's a select board has said yes. And so most town employees are covered by it, I. I think it's incumbent upon us to, um. To agree to accept it as the town's personnel policy. What are your?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When it talks about their personnel policy. Like number of hours people work and how they work and how they can. Paid leave and sick leave, I mean, do all of that. That has to do with personnel that works at the library, is it identical to what the town is? Or not, or do, that's the only thing that, I mean, I, I wondered about, because that is something that we, we, we. Hire and do that, and the town does not. With the library, so how do we stand with that if we look back at our policies? And they're not the same as that of the personnel of hiring, firing and vacation and all that. Is it the same? I mean, I have no idea, that's the only question I have.
Yes, it is.
It is the same.
Yes.
Okay.
I just think, you know, if we're gonna sign off and it's great that we know. What we're signing off on.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, I scanned through all the eighty-one pages, but it, it's a lot.
It is.
So I just, you know, not knowing and being new, I, you know, I trust everyone else on the board. But, you know, I wanted to at least bring that part up, cause I, I don't know.
Well, the, 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 uh, the document itself is a product of, obviously, it's, it's, um, boiler plated from somewhere. Um, but. This personnel subcommittee agreed to it, and the personnel subcommittee has representation from kind of across the board. Um, no pun intended, and, uh, the select board voted to accept. That policy, so. I, I, I can't see a reason not to.
Okay.
Okay. Only concern, well, one concern I, I, I had, uh. Pertains to, to trustees, the others, cause since I'm salaried from the town, it's, it's a little different. But the, the email, the official emails, it, it talks about, uh, and I think. A lot of it pertains to, if you have a town email account. With a waitly.org address on it. That that is all official email, and anybody can request to see. That email that you, you send either receive or, or send to, to that address. And it goes on further to say, if you use your own. Email, your own, it calls it handheld or, or, or technology device to access official email. You are also sus- susceptible to all the rules and regulations governing that public email. So if it ever came down to a, a, an issue, uh, I don't know, criminal or emergency or whatever. And, and you responded to Peter's email, since he uses official email address. Your email is also acceptable to, to inspection because you accessed a public email site. Now, I think we, we all have our own emails here, I was on the town one for a while. Prior positions, where I was with the select board and you kinda had to have a town email site, but I'm off of that now. Uh. And I don't know if that's a concern to anybody else. If that would ever, ever happen where you would get in a situation where they would call up all your emails and wanted to see. What you've sent to that town address, town email address. I don't know.
Well, I can only tell you that, um. When I, on my frontier teacher's, uh, email account, um, we are constantly reminded that. Whatever you send in that, on that email account, imagine it on the front page of the Greenfield recorder. And, and that just guides you, that guides you. Um, to make sure that you, it's a thoughtful thing, and that's why I have cautioned several trustees over my time on the board. Um, that we don't conduct business via email, we send information. We send information about meetings, send agendas. On, but we conduct business, we don't take votes, we don't. Um, do, do things like that, um. Via email. Um, because that, I just think open meeting law is there for a reason, so Fred, I don't know, I mean. You know, i- if, if, if you're caught in some sort of criminal case or whatever, I think your emails are gonna get, um, toasted by somebody anyway. I just, you know, it's, it's like, um. People that I know that don't wanna do any online banking or anything like that, cause they wanna keep their, their, um. Um. Their magnetic ink away from, uh, prying eyes and I just like. Have to laugh, because, you know, all I have to do is, is Google, um, mousetrap, and for the next week and a half. Every one of my social media things is gonna offer me mousetraps. So, you know, the idea of, of this, uh, privacy stuff, I. Just, you gotta be, you gotta be cautious, you have to be cautious, and when you're doing. Um, emailing. Town addresses, waitly.org addresses. Do it with a business, business in mind.
Yeah.
Good advice.
Yeah, okay.
I, I guess. I was maybe surprised that they had that statement in there, that anytime you access it, you're liable. Cause up till now, that wasn't public information, I guess. To every employee, so.
Okay. So, uh, can we take a vote on, on supporting it? Are you comfortable with that? Would somebody, would somebody move to, um? Uh, that the library, uh, agrees to the, uh, personnel policy as voted by the select board?
I move that the library agrees to, uh, conform to the personnel standards and accept it that the select board issued.
Second? Okay, any further discussion, Bob?
No, I was just gonna second.
Okay, Fred, vote?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Ginger?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so now, I think. Without further ado, it's time to adjourn. Okay, um, need a motion to do so?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
And any opposition to a journey?
Yeah.
Good night, everyone, see you on September.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, we'll keep you posted if we find out information regarding any of these things that we've been. Asked to look up or whatever, we'll keep you posted with information. In a special manner.
Great.
We, we may have a new date though.
Have what?
Are we still, is September eleventh the date or it may change?
Um, the, we'll, we'll go with the regular meeting on September eleventh, but if, if the report is ready. After that, we're gonna have to find a time when Deborah is, is also gonna be available, so we could, we could call another meeting. With that as our only agenda item, and I would let you know. Um, take a poll on possible dates and then let you know which one we selected and then post the meeting, okay?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, folks.
Good night.
Good night. Night.